Please staff, bring your location and pledge allegiance to the Father.
I would like to plead for this prayer to God in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, strength, and we ask you for your blessings upon our great city. We ask for special protection for all of us, of course, but especially first responders, firefighters, and those who are on the front line. Thank you that you cause strength and clarity in our thinking processes to help us develop better ways and very good ways to keep our city stronger and well. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Johnson.
Thank you Pastor Johnson.
Counsel, need approval of the agenda? I see we want to make a change, do we have a promotion?
Mr. Mayor, I remove that we lend the agenda to special presentations ahead of civic announcements in public discussion.
Support.
Extension, discussion? I get approval of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
What else changes?
Simple.
Session, session? Do we have an agenda? Takes us to the special presentations. Here's a part, Police Department's civic recognition. Chief?
Thank you. This won't take long at all, I know there's a busy agenda tonight. Every year we give out awards, well, we're trying to make it a tradition where we give out awards to our own officers. This year we also have some civilian awards we'd like to give out and give recognition for. So, Brian, you want to come up first? Brian Mixx is a member of our Mobile Communications Support Unit, and I'm just going to give a brief synopsis of what he did to get his recognition. In November of 2018, Brian Mixx, who was a member of the Mobile Communications Support Unit, saw a young man on the other side of the guardrail of the I-75 overpass of Nine Mile. Brian took a quick action to stop his vehicle and activated his emergency lights. He approached the young man, was able to develop a rapport with the suicidal subject, convincing him to get on a safe part of the sidewalk. The troubled young man was transported to a local hospital for treatment. The young man's girlfriend was extremely thankful for Brian's quick effort. Because of Brian's quick action, he is being given this civilian award for his significant contribution to the good cause to the Hazel Park Police Department and this city. Thank you, Brian.
Ed, you want to come up?
This is also for his son, Ryan, Ed and Ryan Kilburn, with your own Kilburn's rental on Dequender in Hazel Park here. In November of 2018, Hazel Park Police were called to investigate a homicide of a young woman. As we investigate the case, we look for possible surveillance cameras in the area for evidence. We made contact with Everett Kilburn and his family at Kilburn Rental. Family and his employees were extremely corruptive and stopped what they were doing to help us. They immediately assisted us with assessing and reviewing their surveillance system. Ryan Kilburn proudly felt like a part-time detective as he assisted our detectives viewing and locating possible evidence in the hours of footage that needed to be saved. Ed and Ryan used their own initiative and continued to search for various cameras with different views and angles. Based on their work, they found more advantageous footage that our detectives were interested in. The footage that the Kilburns provided was instrumental in establishing timelines during interviews and occasions and interviews that locked in our suspect. The help of the Kilburn family was a key factor in helping us obtain a first-degree murder charge for the suspect from Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. They are presenting, being presented with the civilian award for their significant contribution to the good cause of Hazel Park Police and this city. On a personal note, I have done business with the Kilburns and renting equipment, and they're a fantastic deal with, and they provide great service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd like to thank all the officers for coming up this evening, and nice show of support, and it's been, it's very nice to hear, to bring things that are going on, and the volunteerism within our community. Any other comments from the police chief?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Officer Hazel Park, working in the management of our Hazel Park Police Department, you know, we feel safer every day, and with providing a security for us as homeowners and residents of our community, and also with our Hazel Park Fire Department that also provides a safety feature for us as well, and is there in case we need them. And without those people fighting for us and standing up for us every day, making us feel welcome and safe in our homes, our community wouldn't be where it is today. And I'd like to thank all those people that Fire Department, Police Department, all their efforts. Thank you.
And it goes on to the, another presentation which I have the honor of doing, and I'd like to stir up some ideas. The 2020 census is coming. Believe it or not, everybody wants, we don't want to be counted, but it is a big deal. Our funding, federal funding from the Hazel Park, or Hazel Park as well as the other communities within around us, and the counties. We're all based, our all funding is based upon the federal dollar. With our numbers, it was down in 2010, down to 73 percent. We'd like to be in the 85 to 90 percent, if not more, so we can gain back some of the money that we lost to share, to state the federal shared revenue system. Our schools suffer, our cities suffers. So with that being said, I'd like to, you know, it isn't every tier tenure thing, you know, that's been around, you know, knows how the census works, you know, we're going to have to have some volunteers. So, becoming a member of the Complete County Committee entails participating in upcoming training being held at the Executive Building in Pontiac, February 22nd, at 8:00 PM. Anyone interested in becoming a member for the Complete County Committee, contact City Manager's Office, Linda Yona, and she'll put you in contact, give you the information, see if you qualify to be there. I don't think it's that hard to go out door to door and just take a little, or make some phone calls even, and just get involved. Because the more people we can get counted, the better it is for our community for the next 10 years. You know, you may not think that 5 or 8 percent is a big deal, but it's about $50,000 dollars to give our community, you know, just in the city side, but on the school side. So there's some issues there that we need to focus on, and we all know the demographics across the nation has changed, and people have moved back and forth across the nation. And with those moving around and people changing, we need to find a way, especially after the recession. And so we need to get a collectiveness and see where we can all stand, and know how many people's in the city. Last time, I think we were around 17,000 here in the City Department. Years before that, we were up near 20,000. There's been, you know, kind of chose back and forth, and when the economic downturn, we lost quite a bit in 2000. But that being said, I'm going to end my US Census plea for help, but I'd like to have volunteers that are very interested. We'll post it on our website, and we'll post it on our cable channel. We really would like to have participation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and again, this doesn't, you don't have to go out and actually take a census or this committee. What this committee is going to do is simply publicize the importance of people returning their census forms. Your census form is going to be mailed to your house in 2020, and all you need to do is send that census form back. So we want to make sure we increase our participation. As you said, Mr. Mayor, we had a low participation rate initially last year, I mean, 10 years ago, of 73 percent. So we've got to do much better than that. We need to get, we need to get a 85 to 90 percent range, so we're not hunting people down to try to cop that. And like you said, this has an extremely important impact on everything from federal dollars, from CDPG, to potentially state shared revenues when they do that formula, and if they look again at population, because theoretically it was originally, that was obviously one of the big factors that they used when they calculated those dollars. So it's critically important that we count every Hazel Park resident in the upcoming census.
It's also important for federal grants to our communities, huge goal in city. It can be the difference between a $5,000 extra loan grant for a school system or a $10,000 to $20,000 grant for the city to have the better fund programs, senior kid programs, whatever. So it's a big deal. And the more involvement we have, and a lot of it can, I'm sorry, I didn't mean go door to door, but back years ago when we were younger, and that's what they did.
No, they did, and they will again if they don't receive.
If they don't receive it, they will come out through your door and knock. But we would like to have, a lot of it is just done by email and by phone calls and text messages, is what I'm being told, to people's numbers that are on file anyways, just to give them an idea. But most of it is mailed out to City Managers, crap, I forgot to mention that, but yeah.
Tell your friends and neighbors and family members.
It's not, it's not anything that's intrusive. There may be a few questions you may not like, we all have to get those surveyed, but there, but everything's not in chess, and there's nothing that's going to be intrusive upon your life. But again, thank you. Takes us down to the civic announcements. Anyone from the audience having civic announcements? Oh, the lead exec, our county commissioner, sitting in the front row.
Good evening, and thank you for championing the census, because not only is it federal and state dollars, but county uses population formulas. We did distribute the Community Development Block Grant, the local road funding that we liked that helped. It's all done by formula that includes population. So, thank you for championing it so early. Couple of things. The annual approval to waive your homestead property tax payments, so for low-income people, if you are relying on your homestead property tax refunds, you need to let the city know that you want to waive your payment until after April 30th. You have to notify the treasurer here by February 15th, and then you can waive your taxes till after that period so you can get your IRS check. We do this every year, it helps out people. Want to let people know, students, interns, college students, there are Oakland County summer jobs. They were posted last Monday, and you can find them at www.oakgov.com/jobs. Apply soon, it doesn't have a closing date, but when they have lots of applications, they're going to close it soon. And these are, you know, fair market wages, some are, you know, business-type internships, some are parks and rec. They're there, and I hope that I have representation from my district. Want to remind people that there are a multitude of trainings offered through MSU Extension. These are offered through the state. We do have an Oakland County MSU Extension Office, and they offer classes such as homeownership, gardening, food preparation. Again, those can be found on the oakgov.com website slash MSU. And I get bulletins all the time about classes, and it's a benefit that we get as taxpayers. We do invest somewhere, oh, $750,000 up to $1 million with Oakland County taxpayer dollars to invest in partnership with MSU. I also want to let you know, you know, I am serving, I am chairing two committees. I'm on finance, that's the committee, I chair finance, and it's the gift that keeps giving. I'm on the dream board, retirement board, the claims, the TIF, all because I chair finance. So I'm spending more time at meetings, but it's all good. I'm also chairing the Community Home Improvement Department, Citizens Advisory Council. We are starting a subcommittee for the first time on affordable housing next week, and what can we do to encourage more of it in the county? I have some ideas, and the chair of that committee is Mark Craig, who is the CEO of Community Housing Network. This is a problem across the county, affordable housing. We also introduced a couple of other, I introduced one resolution, policy prohibiting contractual services or agreements with individuals of a familial relationship of an elected or an appointed official. Our county exec has made some appointments through professional service contracts, which is a way of skirting around approval by the Board of Commissioners, checks and balances. We don't feel that they are the best practice, and so we've introduced a couple of resolutions, one being, the second one being an ethics clause in professional services. We also have an ad hoc committee looking at purchasing policies, professional service contracts. Are we doing that in the best, you know, practice way? And I know that our, one of our council members will be working on that topic for us, and I'm thrilled that she's there doing that. But, you know, we will take a better look at it. We want to make sure that we're using our precious tax dollars to benefit all of us and that we get a return on our investment in who we choose to hire or staff our county. So, that's it for this evening. Any questions?
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Any other civic announcements for the audience? Civic announcements from the city council?
Two, the first would be the Hazel Park Historical Museum is open next Thursday, which is the 21st, from 6 o'clock to 8:00 PM. There's always something new there, and it's fun to see Hazel Park's history, and we're working on some new things. And second, in conjunction with the creative arts, I want to announce, this is not completely fully formed yet, but it's far enough along that if you want to share with the community, round hug lied to us all this year. So we wanted to do a winter photo contest, open to the entire community, and winter has been somewhat elusive until this past week. So we're calling it a winter-spring photography contest, and it will be open to the entire community. There will be categories, and we're also having two special groups for junior high and high school students. And the prizes, we're still working it out, but I think they're going to be incredibly special. So watch social media, watch the Creative Arts page, and I would say hopefully you can watch the local paper. And the deadline is going to be March 31st, so we're very close to unveiling this. So hope to see lots of pictures of winter, and that's the, oh, I want to say, more winter. Thank you.
So continuing the art theme, Hazel Park Art Fair is happening the fourth weekend of August, it's 24th and 25th. The applications are now open for all of our artists, not just in Hazel Park, but throughout Southeast Michigan, the state, as well as food vendors and musicians. We definitely welcome local Hazel Park artists with open arms to come join us at the Hazel Park Arts Council meetings. We meet at 11:00 Studio, the second Monday of the month, at 6:00 PM. So you can find information at the Arts Council online, as well as the Hazel Park Art Fair at H, it's H.P. Art Fair, at facebook.com/HPArtFair, where you can find links to all of the applications, so you can come to us at the art fair, and we're excited to announce there. We've got some really good new initiatives that are going to be happening this year. So speaking.
Any other civic announcements from the council? Administration, have we said civic announcements?
Yes, the Hazel Park Fire Department is recruiting members for the Community Emergency Response Team. Information is available on the Facebook page, as well as our site about that important training. It is three-day training, and I would encourage anybody to see if they could have the option to attend that. It will teach you how to cope with an emergency. And everybody wants to help during an emergency, and unfortunately, most folks who don't know what to do when an emergency happens, and so training will give you the background and training and a little bit of capability in terms of how to be actually helpful and not be in the way, and be a net positive to the community if you ever need to call upon it in emergency response team. So please check that training out. I belong to the training. It's good training, I encourage all of you to go through the training, and it's very worth it.
Right, now we're closing civic announcements. Public discussion, I have two people to put in a slip, and then we'll open it up to the public. Jesse Robertson?
Hello, Jesse Robertson at 2335 New Hubbard Avenue. Actually, I want to say that yesterday morning, I had a pleasant surprise when I noticed that the GFL trucks were by around like 7:00 in the morning, and I believe it was by, I did not check, but I knew that by like around 8:00 in the morning that the truckers had been both taken. I know a lot of us have had problems with them before, but it sounds like, you know, some work and improvement has been made, and this is a good thing. So I want to thank the council, and I believe Council of Curo, that you are our advocate for soccer.
I'm not a representative on soccer yet.
So I want to thank you, as well as everybody else, for your efforts to get this. I know it's a very minor thing, but I figured I'd bring something positive. Thank you. Thank you.
Jesse, thank you for your kind comments. For the record, Andy can jump in, or Tom can jump in at any time, but we had a meeting with GFL in the City Manager's Office a couple weeks ago, and we let them know in no uncertain terms, we were displeased with their performance. And Jeff McKee from soccer was also there, and he chimed in with us, and I thought he was very supportive, and he looked at them and he told them, he says, pick up the garbage. If it's out there, just pick it up. So we talked with them about their practices of, and sometimes it's unavoidable, the truck fills, they have to empty the truck, they have to go further, the expressway being closed, every traffic. They had some reasonable excuses for some of the issues. For some of the issues, it was just poor and incompetent performance, and that needs to improve, and we told them that in no uncertain terms. And I want to thank Andy and Tom Jones for their work in forcing them to improvement, but I also want to thank Jeff McKee, because he made it clear, if they don't shape up, you know, we will take action to do what we need to do to make sure our residents garbage is picked up. So, thank you both. Thank you, Jeff, for your time.
Okay, we have one more, Chris Van Ash, I'll put in a location here.
Hello, I'm Chris Van Ash at 125 West Hayes. It's regarding a matter that happened two weeks ago. My front window was broke by A.I.D. Developments. My window still has not been replaced. I've been in contact with them several times. Process they want to do, they want to remove my window several times from my house, and bring it somewhere and bring it back. I don't know them. At this point, I don't know what else to do. I've been in contact with them today, they didn't tell me anything, they told me that they're working on it. And now I'm going on two weeks with broken window in the front of my house, and I'm seeing if I can get any assistance from the city to resolve this matter.
Again, this is, this is unfortunately a civil matter between two property owners, but I believe a representative of that company is in the audience, that don't know if he wants to address it at this point in time or not. We'll go out there and we'll take a look at the property, and I'll see if there's any negligence, or if we can review it to see if it could potentially become a police matter. But right now, maybe since Mr. Van Ash is here, maybe that representative of that company wants to address it. How long is your, you go in or go out?
Two weeks.
During the conference time, we can.
I have kids, I have pets, I was called today, they want to put a board on my window when they take it the second time. And there's no plywood going on for my window. Yes, absolutely.
Or a window I have to fix, which is what you used to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other, any other public discussion, come on up, like the city name and address?
Oh, my name is Adam Gardner for the A.I.D. Developments, I'm the president and CEO. I'm familiar with Chris and the problem. My guys wanted to, it's a two, from what I'm told, is a two-pane window. The outer pane broke when our person who troubles our walkways had the blow in the wrong direction, and it shot some snow, and it cracked the outer pane of his glasses. It's an accident, it happened unfortunately. My guys wanted to, it's two-pane, so I don't think you can find a mobile company that'll come out and do it on the spot. So he's asking us to find a mobile company that can replace a two-pane window, which is not going to be possible. The only way to do it is to pull the window out, put a piece of plywood in there in the meantime, fix the window, bring it back, and put it in. Now, if he's not happy with that, we've told him, he's more than happy to get two or three quotes, get it fixed, have it, we'll send to our office, and we'll pay for it if he's not happy with that. But it's cold outside, so like pulling off a window now would be a mistake. It's got one pane still there, if he doesn't want the window pulled out and pulled in, maybe we just wait till it's some type of weather. If he's open to finding somebody else to do it and just give us the bill, we're more than happy to pay for that, sure. But it wasn't accident, it wasn't probably wrong, it was just accident.
Any comments from civic, what would you like to?
Again, those civic can resolve it. Come back. Right, this is very definitely a civil matter that we are, we are not in, however, I think, you know, is a matter of good faith. If Mr. Garden would want to post a deposit with the City of Hazel Park to ensure that Chris is able to get his window fixed, I think that might assuage your concerns, and I think that might meet your obligation.
Absolutely. That's, well, problem solved.
Okay, so we, yeah, just, again, you need to get, someone needs to get a quote, okay? Then you need to bring an amount of quote to that, and then have it fixed, and then we'll transfer you the money when you get it fixed. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Any other comments from the general public, or any other issue?
Good evening, my name is Adam Gardner. I am speaking on two properties. One is 134 East Maple Dale, one is 1045 East Jarvis. We own both of these properties, and both of them are in pretty bad shape. On Maple Dale, I believe the city council voted to have a demo, a full demo order put in, to have the complete structure removed. I think it was done well before I even bought the property. And the other one is on 1045 East Jarvis, I don't think there was a demo order on the property per se, but somewhere along the lines, when I put in my demo application to the building department, they would have discussed different foundations, which is what I want to talk about briefly here. We have these two properties that need to be rebuilt, maybe new houses on them, we know that. I believe the city is asking us to tear out the foundations, and either backfill it or build a new foundation, we build a new house. That's not economically feasible. These foundations are in good shape, they're not passable, they're in good shape. We have an engineer who's been doing engineering work for how many years, probably?
Over 40.
Over 40 years, who's probably seen a lot of foundations. He has inspected them both, and he has written his professional opinion letter saying that these foundations are fine. So we're not asking the council to get rid of the demo order, we're just asking for it to be revised to a partial demo in order for us to allow it to keep the foundations, remove all the structure, and then frame up fresh from that foundation, all brand new houses. Jarvis has been sitting a while, we started, we should have started, we waited for utilities, they finally came. We're ready to go on Jarvis, that's like, we're ready. Maple Dale, we've got construction drawings already prepared, we're ready to apply for the permits. We just really need to get past this foundation issue, so we can push forward.
Probably never going to be nothing getting past a foundation issue, considering that when we pass a demo, it's the entire property, including the garages and everything. That's always been our standard across the board, because we don't want any ambiguity between the current, the old owner and the current owner, or about setbacks or anything like that.
Right, but when you buy a house and you do a renovation, don't you have that same problem theory, where someone comes in and buys a house?
When you're doing a renovation, you're not doing a full rebuild. Not tech, well.
Right, we already passed the demo order, aren't we, Dan?
Right, so we were told that the city council has the ability to revise the order.
Has the ability to do a lot.
Right. So seeing that, seeing that the city obviously would let you create additional revenues, So, seeing that, seeing that the city obviously would let you create additional revenues proposing to build new structures on different parcels, we're not gonna, I mean, we have options here, right? So, either we can, you know, go to the next level, whatever the next level is past the city council, or we could just demo the houses and backfill them and just have nothing there for who knows how long. Or we can kind of come together and see if we can work something out where we both agree these foundations are okay. The city is off hook because we have an engineer who stamped their letter saying there is nothing wrong with the foundation and then we can move forward and get these houses built and move on to the next ones.
Can I bring this up?
Yeah.
So, I've just received your affidavit of responsibility that you signed on 1031 eighteen this year, taking responsibility for 1045 East Jarvis. Understand by signing this affidavit, I am accepting responsibility for the violations cited. I also understand that I have until 11/26 to demolish the house, clean out a debris and grade lot directly what remain. I'm not sure, I feel that this was, I mean, you signed this when you purchased the property, so you were aware of the issues with the property when you purchased it.
I understood it was an order for it to be demolished, but if there's a structure, when I was here last month at the other council meeting, there was an older gentleman sitting where Mrs. Schwartz is right now. And when they were talking about the church and they were talking about all the notices and the condension and all that stuff, the older gentleman over there said, "Bring us something. Tell us why this building should stay. Tell us what your plan is. Show us something."
That is your right.
Right. So, I just, I thought it was interesting. So, is my right? So, I'm here now showing you, if you guys do not want to work, then we just have to, whatever the next step is, I just wanted to be on file, I'm asking for help here to work this out.
Another point of that is, that isn't already owned property, but it's demolished or that was ordered, demoed or had citations while the owner owned it. You purchased this property, it already being cited for demo with an affidavit stating that you understood that that was part of the purchase, pricing part of the purchase agreement.
Yeah, you, Adam, you promised to demo it. Now, you can, as the mayor said, you can make your case and I'm sure the city council will listen, but I want everyone to know and you to know and understand that by signing that affidavit, you promised that you were going to demolish that structure and you were going to grade the property and that, of course, involves removal of the existing basement. The other one, what's your address?
Jarvis.
That's what it is.
Maple Dale. Jarvis never had a demo order, I think.
Where is your?
Right here, you have.
You need reception here, you signed it.
Tear it down.
On Maple Dale?
On Jarvis.
No, I can't tear him down and I can backfill them and I can grade the whole lot and I can do that. I can do that if that's.
Why should we show you any preferential treatment than anyone else?
There you go. This is a promise to demolition, clean the lot debris, grade the lot by the specified date, your bond subject to forfeiture. You signed the promise to demo this property on October 30th, 2018.
I understand, but on December 3rd, we had an engineer go out and see that that wasn't the case. We would rather not demo it. Demoing will cost, and backfilling will cost me, you know, six to ten thousand dollars a lot. We can do that and then they could just stay vacant, but we don't want that. We want to build on these lots, these are good lots to build on. We have thirty other lots we can go to and build on too.
There may be one more issue too with, one of these is certainly a non-conforming house, I think, the building department let me know. So, again, you can't rebuild a non-conforming house after it's been torn down, the foundation remains a business. That one has got to come up. Anything that's non-conforming must come up for sure. The city council legally cannot absolve you of that right for us, the houses that's non-conforming. You'd have to get a variance and that's a relative process, right?
We could get a variance, we could apply for the variance.
I think the shortest distance between two points is simply to demo them.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Is currently your habit of demoing homes the way you've tried to demo those home on Jarvis?
Absolutely not.
Because all I've heard is phone call, a phone call resident after a resident, school kids coming by, they're, they're in the better, warmer weather. This property's been in that disarray for a couple of months now.
Oh, yeah, it's horrible.
And you're not really securing the fencing around it, not, we've had to provide the fencing and that really made it a very neat or clean operable site to demo. And you've taken the time doing this and not getting the proper permits upfront, getting the disconnects and everything else. I'm going here because if this is any consolation to how you do work, the question is, do we want you to?
That's a fair question. We don't typically do work like that. We've done dozens of successful projects locally, we've done hundreds of them throughout North America. We know what we're doing. Where a mistake was made along the line somewhere and we take full responsibility, but we had to leave the house in that condition it's in right now because we were told to get off the property, which is fair. We got off and that helped have the whole thing happen. But finally, now we have Consumers Energy who's coming disconnected. We'd like to start building. That foundation is in perfect shape. We're throwing out thirty, forty thousand dollars for no reason.
I'll tell you what, since you want to argue this and debate it back and forth, then we can get a motion from the city council member to send us to the hearings officer and have it come back to us to follow the property procedure before it actually has been. We have to give it due process.
Well, actually, you've already given it due process.
We gave it more due process.
You've given it due process plus due process.
And we have to kill it all.
I think you're, at this point, he's already been in the hearing on the office already or to demolish that lot. We have the order right there signed.
Well, we also had on November 13th, 2018, Mr. Garden appeared before council and he wanted to personally arrange for the demolition of both 134 East Maple Dale, 1240 East Granite, amongst other things. So, it's not like he's not been looking into demolition and stuff. He's bringing this to us. He knows that this has been under demolition order, he knows that this has been going through. So, I understand about due process, but Mr. Garden has already.
He's already exhausted it.
Yes.
Yes.
What do you want us to do?
It is up to you.
Maybe order her to see orders of general property or?
It is up to you, he's already signed and.
Affidavit of responsibility.
Are you gonna tear it down within twenty one days?
I think what we would probably do if something wasn't done here, we'd probably take it to the next level, to that circuit court or something else, we would definitely go the old way and make sure that, because this is a lot of money we're talking about.
Again, I don't care how much money it's spent.
I know you don't, that's why.
It's not my decision to place the time of your money.
I understand.
Well, Mr. Garden, in addition, as council member stated, the affidavit of responsibility was signed by you that goes back to October 30th. This is now into mid-February. You've also appeared before council in November discussing about demolition of properties, other properties, and this has been going on for months and months and months. You've acknowledged responsibility. You knew that this was what the situation was and it's gone through the due process. I, you know, I understand that what you're presenting, but Mr. Garden, this goes back to October when you acknowledged for the demolition. It's been months and months and months. So, I understand you heard what the church attorney or someone else said or an individual filling for me that night, but at the end of the day, this was purchased subject to the conditions that were already violative on that property and you acknowledged by affidavit responsibility that you signed, it's notarized here and this is your signature.
Yeah, I'm not debating if I signed it or not.
So, I believe the due process is exhausted itself and you did promise to clean the lot debris, grade the lot, demolish the house and you wanted to remember.
Just no specific mention about the foundation though.
If you're demolishing a house, you're demolishing the house in total and that contributes to the foundation as well. That is a matter of several blocks.
Yeah, that's not fair. No, no, I don't want to do that, I'm just asking the question.
Your honor.
Yes.
You've done business in Hazel Park before and when you bought these properties, you knew, you knew the condition. You brought a quarter million dollars in auction.
Thirty million, sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, you've spent a lot of money and you knew what was going on.
Yes.
And you're coming back to us piecemeal, piecemeal. You know, this one over by the school is completely unacceptable. How that happened, how you even started demo without the gas being disconnected, I don't understand. There's an elementary school there. There's our children that, if you ever watched South Park, they're looking for stuff to get into.
I know, I know. I understand that Renee Melissa spoke that day. It was, I, I'm.
There was nothing stopping you from securing the property and that's, that has none of a lot to do with anything. I just want to let you know that this is very upsetting and we're hearing about it every day.
I understand, I want to, I want to start there, but the thing is like this, is from a business point of view, is we have two properties to look at. Either we can demolish it and grade it and it's vacant. Vacant doesn't create any tax revenue.
From a business point of view, if there's a liability injury on the property because you can't secure it or it goes boom, you've got bigger problems.
I agree, so the question is, what do we, everything is safe now. The question is, what do we do from here? We have a foundation that's good, we can start building next week or.
I don't know about everything is safe. We put this no fence out there, that no fence needs to be re-secured, you need to make sure, you need to be, yes.
The city didn't get charged before.
Yes. Right. You are supposed to make sure that any demolition site is secured when you engage in demolition practices. In this case, this didn't happen. Again, we want to work with you, but somehow you're becoming your own worst enemy in terms of your relationship with the city of Hazel Park. Why don't you turn a new page today? Demo those houses, fix Mr. Van Ash's window and all of a sudden, we will begin to see you then as someone who keeps his promises and he is someone that we can deal with. These five people are charged with protecting the city of Hazel Park. This has gone on long enough. That is half a house. It is garish and repulsive. It is a front to this community that exists there like this. So, what we need to have happen and to begin to repair this relationship is for you to simply keep your promises. And the more that you do that, I think the more cooperation and trust that you will engender in this community. Because I'm not trying to beat up on you, I just want to see these issues resolved. I want to protect my residents, okay? Is that good advice? I'm not trying to be, you know, a jerk or anything, I'm just being blunt with you and telling you.
I think we've had other contractors come through here and had to deal with in the past. The neighbor, they work with us and not against us and do the right process. They don't have our problems and we're able to work with you as well. But if you try to circumvent the way our procedures are, how we try to get things done, it makes a difference on everyone, including the neighbors that have the property next door to us.
I know, I'd love to get these things going as quickly as possible, but I don't see how we're gonna do that.
In that being said, we're going to have to do our job and we're going to ask the council for a motion for a twenty one day emergency tear down order on Jarvis. And also, I think the city attorney would like one on the, I think we already have one, yes?
On the Maple Dale.
Which is, make that one, get that one going, that's already done. He's already exhausted his order.
Yes.
On the board, Mr. Mayor. This is a public discussion.
Yes.
This is not, this isn't a scientific, this isn't.
But it came up under.
We can take it up under, we can take it up. You can take it up now actually, but you can take it up under new business in five weeks.
Well, if you've done one thing, probably doesn't need anything done. It's an order to demolish.
Yeah.
And we don't have to do anything.
We're probably going to issue tickets if it's not done and, you know, those tickets, we missed the new tickets and you'll have to see the judge.
Let's bring it up, let's bring this back under new business.
Okay, some more discussion.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public point of view? Anyone? Any subject? It's open. Open mic. Thank you for your time. I'd like to say thank you to everyone that's here as well. We're gonna move down our agenda here. Set agenda.
Mr. Mayor, who consent agenda items one through eight?
Support.
Okay, discussion, dissection. I have one item I would like to talk about. Item eight, the asset is secured. Thank you for making your purchase. You called earlier today and maybe a discrepancy of a Sidwell number that we have listed here. I'd like for you to have, see our city manager's office, our city clerk's treasurer's office will remain seen to clarify that discrepancy tomorrow. Just to make sure you have the right numbers on that order.
Congratulations.
It's the gentleman's gonna build a home. He's gonna join this, build a lot and building a home.
Hi, my name is Steve Zazo, Micky Zazo. I live at 717 East Match, resident for two years. I was living in Minnesota when this property was originally purchased to actually be adjoining lot. So, for two years, I've been looking at this lot and saying, there's gotta be a better opportunity for us than the one skinny lot we have the two. So, I have for myself and my husband, I'm going to say thank you for the opportunity to buy that piece of property. We will be building on that, adjoining the lot and we look forward to a new building.
Thank you.
Great, great.
Thank you.
And anyone else say discussion, dissection? Anyone bring it up off the same agenda? The legislative administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, this is an item to bring our fees for water tapping and other fees related to the tapping of water for new construction, basically into alignment with what our community's doing. Mr. Young from the water department is here, if you have any additional questions.
Well, he did an extensive amount of research challenges, he worked very hard. He pestered me many days with the details of it. He's very thorough.
Yes, if you look in the dictionary, the fifth definition is Tim Young and there's a picture in the dictionary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Tim, why are we doing this?
With the, all the new construction went on within the city, which has been turned after many years, we were just reviewing our procedures and found that our costs were actually, well, the whole, where they need to be at this time. So, what we did is we just did a cost analysis and actually called all our distributors and contractors and everything and got actual cost numbers from them to perform these different duties as we show. The tapping of new line, the material costs, the contractor costs, just not in line with what we were charging, which restoration fees didn't exist, so when we're breaking open the street, I'm not sure where the fund came from that covered the replacement of the road afterwards. We wanted to make sure that we aren't losing any money, even though we have to probably perform any of these duties. The demoing, we used to do a procedure with demo disconnects and we wanted to try to leave the service lines in place and disconnect a property line. Our new state mandates are coming and this will not be allowed to be done. So, we're gonna start demo disconnecting, rate for apartments and take the whole system right off for each property.
So, did bring any kind of clarifications that the mandate that they didn't think through all the way?
There's still having meetings after meetings and.
That's a little.
City attorney and the city manager, as much as we.
It's a little overboard for communities and our residents to deal with, come up with that. And everybody must pay my understanding that this is, that was a pretty heavy mandate that they snuck here on. It's pretty harsh to put all that on everyone. I know you're reading through it like you're really consuming what China did, but.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
I generally tried to make it as simple as possible to show everybody exactly what it is we're looking at, kind of, that photographs we put in there show where all this underground infrastructure actually exists, so that we're gonna have a, I'm gonna think about the location of the materials and CJ will bring that in and why it turns into a big job.
All right, are you coming?
I just really wanted to thank you for the way you presented this information so the average person can understand it, the charge as well as including comparables from what other cities are charging, so that we know that this is standard and indefinitely the visual aids showing the storm after.
It's hard because most of what I do is hidden underground.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for that, it was very helpful, one other piece.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the new water tap fees as presented.
Support.[1745.12]
Any dissection, discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Tim. We know that you're very thorough. Excuse the buck off the nickel, you don't accept the state of residents' money, thank you.
Yes, sir.
God, don't.
Yes. Mine's actually a little more graphic.
I didn't want to go that far. But, thank you.
I got that from my father. We got that from his father.
Contract with Building Institute, this is a great program.
This is a great program. Mr. Mayor, we have a representative from Building Institute here. She may wish to speak on this. I hope she does on the button right now. Jeff Campbell, myself and DDA member Mike McCall, we had a meeting with her and we were very pleased with the information that we found out about Building Institute. I'm excited to bring this proposal to you. Instead of me explaining what Build Institute is, I'll let her explain it.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. My name is April Boyle. I'm the founder and executive director of Build Institute. And we're an entrepreneurship training program at the crossroads of economic and community development. So we exist to empower locals to start businesses in their community. We believe that small businesses are the backbone of our economy. They keep jobs in their community. The wealth and money stays in the neighborhood. And so that's really why we exist. We started in Detroit in 2012. We have graduated about 1,700 people through our program over the last seven years. We've launched over 500 companies. I have lots of material I can share with you, but I didn't bring it up at the end of this moment. And so we are moving into other communities outside of Detroit. So southeast Michigan is our growing footprint. We do some work in Ferndale. We just launched in Pontiac. I live in Pleasant Ridge. I didn't see my address here in Detroit and Ferndale. And so, just been in my honor of Hazel Park. I've frequented many of the new businesses and some of the old businesses that have been around. I think the structure and the bones of the commercial districts have a lot of potential. And I think that we can add value in helping to help some of the artists and other organizations and businesses create more wealth and jobs and a more vibrant community. So I put a proposal in front of you. It can be customized depending on your needs. We are bringing in matching funds from PNC Bank, which I think is helpful. And we can also support some of the businesses through some of our other programming like Detroit Soup, Kiva, which is an international micro lending program. So it just brings more funding and excitement around entrepreneurship, small business ownership, jobs that cannot be outsourced.
Mr. Mayor, when Jeff Campbell and Mike McCall and I met with her and Amy wanted to be there so badly, we just couldn't fit Amy Aubrey in because she took her new job with the county, we were favorably impressed. I mean, we were, we were excited. I mean, Mike can speak for himself if he wishes to speak on this agenda item as well, but we were excited. So on behalf of Mr. Campbell, who is due to a family emergency tonight, I just want to say the administration strongly supports approval of this proposal. We look forward to working with Build to really bring some cool programs part of me to Hazel Park. I think if some of the entrepreneurs who wanted to start businesses and had their training, I think they would have had a much better chance of being successful. Because we all have seen businesses that opened up with a great view of promise and fanfare and hope for the future and they don't make it. And preparation from this program would really enable them to have a much better shot at making it or maybe swaying them, and that's only too. If someone goes through this program and they realize that their cupcake factory maybe is gonna be a little more, taking it, you know, to a shop in the middle of John Arden's gonna be a little more owners than they expected, they decide not to do it and keep doing it in their basement, that's only too.
Right. Absolutely.
Any questions from the council?
So first I just want to say, one of the things I used to do many, 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 several jobs ago was research on economic development and things like entrepreneurs and business incubators. And with a grant, we were able to discover how truly effective these types of resources are, which is why I'm really excited to see them coming to our community. One of my concerns, not with this program, but with our community itself, as we've all experienced with medical marijuana, is we kind of have a hold on a lot of our real estate. And my concern is we're gonna go train all these wonderful entrepreneurs and not gonna have any storefront available. So I just want to know what kind of efforts maybe you'll be making or services on our end to try to work with some of our landlords to make sure that we freed up, make sure we have reasonable rents for some of these entrepreneurs to start getting people to move from, you know, making candles in their basement to actually having a storefront property in our downtown corridor for people to go and visit and walk by and have dinner and go shopping and do all of those things. The program is amazing. I love this. But my concern is the real estate piece of it and how we do that connection.
Well, that was something we discussed when we met and it's a challenge not just here, everywhere. Landlords and the disconnect between grassroots entrepreneurs and being able to afford brick and mortar. So we do have several programs in place that can help people move from their basement to, I know that you said the Hazel Park Art Fair, so we do a lot with pop-ups in temporary to give people an opportunity to really have proof of concept, to understand whether this is a product that people will buy. That's really important before you move into a brick and mortar is to make sure that you have a product that people want.
Right.
And so can we give people an opportunity to experiment and test their ideas before they take that leap into a five-year lease that will, you know, eat up their family savings and put them in debt? So we'd like to, we have lots of programs that will support that. And then as we get more embedded in the community and work with the entrepreneurs in the city and all the other organizations that are working in economic and community development, you start to build relationships and maybe programming that can help bring out the landlords who may be holding onto property because they will see that this will be a win-win for everyone, the more vibrant, the more active, the more activated the commercial corridors are. It's a win-win for everyone and prices start to go up and we're not talking about displaced or gentrification because we really want local ownership.
Any other comments? Questions from the council? Do you have any questions for us?
Amy, I'd like to hear more about your research. Mayor Pro Tem, Amy, I should say. And I think there's a lot we can learn from you as well.
I will get your contact info and send you to the research.
And we really see this as a true partnership, so any, you know, we want to do this collaboratively with you, with the community as well, with the other players. So if there's a chamber, a DDA, the city council, we just really want this to be collaborative.
We've seen a lot of businesses open up here and not make it because they, i.e., don't have the capital resources or they don't have the dedication. It takes a lot of hours, a lot of commitment for a business owner, especially the first four or five years. And then even after that, you still have to keep your thumb on how to do it, keep watching how much weight the dollars are being spent, as well as whether or not you're bringing in enough revenue based upon your sales.
And we do all that training upfront so that it's a pretty, a big wake-up call for many people and some of them decide not to take that on.
The whole concept, it's a great, this is a great program because I hear it all the time. I like to do this, I like to reflect. But, you know, ideas are great. Then you can put it on paper, it seems better. You put your money out and you open up the door and then two years down the road, they'll say, I'm tired of this, I don't want to do it anymore. That's a lot of hours, something like eighty, ninety hours a week. And then they walk away. That's hard to do.
Yeah. So we're trying to...
This is a great way of getting people to see the light.
Create a support network. But how can we also educate the community and encourage the community to support their local small businesses? So it can't be done by the business alone or it can't be done by government or us. It really is a community effort. We all have to decide that we want to support local small businesses in our community and we have to do that by spending our money with them.
I think, I want to thank you for bringing this to our city because I think this is an amazingly valuable program. I also think that this addresses a lot of concerns of local residents where we keep saying, you know, we want small businesses, we want a walkable district, we want something other than, you know, the boxes.
Right.
And I think this is a great way to set those businesses up for success because the reality is, we can want all we want, but if we don't have, if the people don't have that education to properly market their products and if we as a community don't support those products, they are going to fail.
Right.
Split out. So I love this idea and I really thank you, A, for doing this, but also bringing it up, which is going to get checks a lot of our boxes and really, really helps people in our community and I am excited for that. As an entrepreneur myself, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for people.
Well, we'll be tapping into your knowledge as well, so thank you. Yeah, and so if anything comes to your mind after the meeting, I'll leave my card and some more contact info, so please follow up with any other questions or concern, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval of the contract with Build Institute with an initial payment of $10,000.
Support.
Any other comments, discussion, dissection? Item three, magistrate report, appointment of Tanya Bowers to the magistrate for, as magistrate for the city of Hazel Park Division of Forty Third District Court.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Two weeks ago.
Well, two weeks ago, our long-term Hazel Park magistrate, James Patterson, he announced his resignation. So the chosen candidate from Chief Judge Joe Longo and Judge Chuck Etter is Tanya Bowers. Tanya is Hazel Park resident. I did have her resume, but my trust assistant cleaned my desk today and I can't find it, but I do remember she was extremely well qualified. So I am requesting that she be confirmed as our new magistrate.
Counsel?
Motion to approve Tanya Bowers as magistrate for the Hazel Park Division of Forty Third District Court.
Support.
Dissection, discussion?
Tanya, you here?
Tanya, you here? No. We have Tanya coming next to you.
I will try to have her have, right, again, just to clarify, so the fourth, oh, Forty Third District Court, because the magistrates are technically community property, although she will primarily be assigned to Hazel Park, she will also be the duty magistrate several weekends and every couple months where she will be magistrate on call for search warrants and things like that for mat nights in front of Hazel Park as well. So they do sit in other communities as well.
Play with passes. Item four, resolution for bond insurance for road improvement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is simply your resolution to intent bond for the road programs. We need to pass this so that we can place an ad in a paper of general circulation and we can begin the process of a forty-five day wait period to draw the bond so that we can reconstruct John Arden and Neymar. I know that nobody's excited about that, but, no. So I ask for your approval.
Motion, counsel?
I'll make motion to approve the resolution 02-005-19, bond issuance for road insurance.
Support.
Dissection, discussion, they're done. Passes. Item five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution to extend the application life for the applications for medical marijuana licenses currently under review and it is also a resolution to extend the bond for those who are conditionally approved an additional six months. And this is to basically deal with the fact that the state of Michigan is in very slow conditions at this point.
Counsel, we have a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve resolution 02-06-19, extend hunting medical marijuana application.
Support with discussion.
Moving to discussion. Counsel, over.
Just so folks know, we have conditionally approved a whole bunch of applicants and the state of Michigan is taking their sweet time on issuing licenses and through no fault of their own, the people that have applied, we still want to keep that window open should there be an opening to allow. So again, this is, this is, we're having to react to something because of the state and I think it's a good business for the applicants that we did approve.
Any other discussions for other council members? Mary Pro Tem, any questions? Orders of commissions, appointment of state department assistants.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received communication from Beverly Hinton, gentleman of youth assistance, and she requests a formal appointment of Sharon Barton, Annie Joffler, Nicole Hennessy, and Faith Leformwitz to the youth assistance committee. It's my understanding these individuals are hardly participating with the committee and they're just asking for formal appointment. The administration recommends a appointment.
Move approval of the appointments to the Hazel Park Youth Assistance Committee.
Support.
How long is open?
These appointments, I think, actually run in perpetuity. There's been, there's never been a timeframe established for them with youth assistance. Mr. Mayor, the administration is recommending the appointment of Melissa Baldwin and Jared Gagos of Recreation of Hazel Park.
There you go. Motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'll go ahead and prevent through those two appointments, the Recreation of Hazel Park.
Support.
Any dissection, discussion?
Yes, Melissa's here.
There she is.
Did you want to say hi or?
Hello.
And there you go. That was a wonderful speech. Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
I'm very excited.
Serene's speech so very highly of you, ladies, so I'm glad that you sent me on the floor. Thank you.
I can second that. I also speak kindly to Melissa. I've worked with her on the initiative of Union Garden and she's a wonderful asset for the community.
I think we're making a great team.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
We have...
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends appointment of Barbara Winter to the planning commission.
Barbara's here.
Barbara's here.
Barbara's here.
Motion approval of the appointment of Barbara Winter to the planning commission.
Support.
Dissection, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just like we praised Melissa, I will praise Barbara. Barbara has been the stalwart, wonderful administrative assistant to Robert Wittenberg as well as Ellen Corbin Lipton. Before him, she's a Hazel Park resident with a master's degree in government and we look forward to working with her on the planning commission. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then, a final appointment to the arts council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends the appointment of Jeffrey Sanchez and Amy Aubrey may wish to elaborate on this as well.
Go ahead, Mary Pro Tem.
So Jeff is a newer resident here. He's also an employee at one of our local small businesses, Salmons. He brings a wonderful background in film, music, and everything. She's the arts council, so he's just gonna do nothing but help make this better. So I'd like to move approval of Jeff and Jeff to the arts council.
Support.
Discussion, anyone? Dissection? Welcome, Jeffrey. Table items, any table items? Any discussion about the table items in the last meeting? I see we had the surveys, the analysis of the church. All right, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, nothing that we're gonna work on tonight.
Just like to make a motion to receive. File an effort, Director. Can I get that, please?
Motion to receive and file a little report from Landmark Kennedy Church regarding the listing agreement and key market analysis.
Support.
Thank you. Since we asked for it.
No, that's appropriate.
And new business?
You ever heard of that?
Yes.
I have too. I brought it up on numerous occasions. The audio is awful. And it's becoming an issue now with, when there's other meetings here where we're not using microphones at the table, it's difficult for the audience to hear what's going on, the discussions that are being held. And the quality at home, the volume only goes up so high on the TV. We've got to come up with some kind of a solution. Even if it's, you know, I can sit in the back of the room with my phone and record a meeting and have better audio quality than what's broadcasting right now. One huge problem is when people come up to speak, if they don't talk directly into the microphone, nobody at home hears it. And I'm sure right now people are sitting at home watching my lips move and not hearing a word. So that's one thing. I'd like to figure something out to correct the audio.
You and me both, and as we discussed the last time that we brought up, which I think was just, you know, last month, it's not for lack of trying. We've brought in multiple experts from multiple different entities and organizations who were supposed to be able to fix this problem, but they have not. supposed to be able to fix this problem, but they have not.
We need to try.
We will be trying. We're not going to give up on it.
Yeah, second thing is, Tom, are we doing Earth and Grease Day this year? I would like to get a chance to sit down with you and talk about, and I know a few years back we had recycling competitions and ways to boost our recycling, and one of our board members at the museum, the historical commissions, Sarah, who's a fairly back-to-your resident, simple things on composting. Now, I have a garden, I compost. Most people that, you know, you peel your carrots, it just goes right in the garbage. And I'd like to talk about some kind of a composting program and then promoting things like even your pumpkins can go off with your garbage in the fall. So, there's a lot of things I think we need to cut down on our bulk of garbage, and we'll have a chance to sit down and meet with you, and we'll hit the vaccination clinic at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council over here, any new business still over here? Let's go back to the new old business that we discussed earlier about the property at small forty-five East Charis and Lewis?
Ten forty-five East Charis.
Ten forty-five East Charis.
Does they have a recommendation from the city attorney?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that the city council firm demolition of these properties. They're darryl, they're dangerous. They were well-known to be problem properties when Mr. Gardner purchased them. He has made promises to the city to do certain things inclusive of demolition. In the past, when the city council was going to have one of the properties, I believe it was one thirty-four East Mapledale demolition, he had requested that the council allow him to have his own demolition, teams come out and take a look and give some prices. So, because council member Holligan said, he's been bringing piecemeal to the council, and all the while, the neighborhoods are suffering with these darryl, dangerous business homes.
So, we just need to reaffirm one thirty-one?
One thirty-four East Mapledale?
One thirty-four East Mapledale.
Yes.
And then, ten forty-five is?
He's already signed the updated responsibility.
We didn't make a motion to...
You may, if you wish.
Officially, if that way, if he decides to pay us a circuit court penalty, is that a problem?
We believe we're sufficiently prepared, but if he wished to include that, if the motion makes a difference to...
That way, he has...
That's fine?
Yes.
I don't want to see anything get so clear.
That's fine.
So, we do have motion to reaffirm the current order of demolition for one thirty-four East Mapledale, council, according to the administration.
I move that we reaffirm our previous decision to demolish one thirty-four East Mapledale.
Support.
Discussion. City attorney, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Dissention? Motion passes. Ten forty-five East Charis, your recommendation to have the, I'd like to see a motion to demolish this property within twenty-one days as an emergency order, and if the gentleman proceeds to challenge it, that's his priority, to have not attended any of them, it is dangerous to the community. The way it's such...
There's a chair, Melissa, would you, I want to make sure this is the problem.
That was my recommendation.
I agree. I would say that we need a twenty-one day emergency order. This is unacceptable.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion for emergency.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Now we have a discussion. Any more discussion? Any changes from the city attorney to that motion?
No, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Discussion, motion, any dissent? Motion passes. I hope Mr. Gardner can see the error of his ways and can just process much easier.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, and I'll, with your permission, I will address through the chair to the individual, the easiest and best way to work with the city of Hazel Park is to keep your word and keep your promise. You'll find that we're very easy to work with, that we are very firm when it comes to protecting the interests of our community and protecting our residents. You can't leave something like that open to the elements that long and expect us to not do something about that. It's horrendous. I feel sorry for the people who have to live by that and see that every day. So, once you begin this process, keeping your word with us and building that trust, you'll find us a fair and easy to newly to work with. We just want to protect our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from the department heads, do we have any, the local department heads that want to add anything?
Evening, Mayor and counsel. Just like to speak about GFL for a moment. I have had an additional talk with supervision of GFL, and in the last two weeks, I've seen a significant drop in complaints and missed garbages and that. A little bit more of awareness thing. They added an additional forum in for a couple of weeks, and I think it's made a difference. So, hopefully we'll keep going on that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I said good things about Tim Young, and I will also now say good things about Tom Jones. He has been working very hard to make sure that GFL is with the program, and he's also been doing a lot of hard work on road funding. He's working with us, with Serena and I, and Amy Coopie on the park. He's been doing a great job, so thank you, Tom.
Communications from any other department heads? Mayor, we had our discussion this evening. Thank you.
I have a question for the police chief, I'm pretty sure. Sorry, chief.
That's all right.
With this weather, I've been seeing a lot of people walking in the street. I was at eleven and John R. the other day, and a man my age or older walking in the street, and somebody honks at him, his arms are flailing like, you know, I belong here in the street. Can you address this, please?
Yes, I'll have all the officers reminded to keep an eye on all the streets and pedestrians, for sure.
People are walking in, this is eleven mile and John R., and the guy's walking in the street. And it's one thing if it's tussler and, one thing, I know, they're doing it all over, I mean, I've seen it.
Yeah. For the record, Councilman McHirrow is correct. You're not supposed to walk in and go to the street, Hazel Park, you will get a ticket for that. But it's also important for homeowners to remember too, that you've got to shovel. I mean, Sunday night messed up the show because I was out shoveling. So, we're all homeowners in Hazel Park, we have or renters or whomever, if you live in the house, you have a responsibility to shovel that stuff. So, that said, still shouldn't walk in the street.
This is a side street.
And if you, if you're walking in the street, you shouldn't, you shouldn't do it, but walk a little, toward the curb.
Will give us some attention.
Thank you. And as Melissa points out, wear clothing that can allow you to be seen. If it's in the middle of the night and you're walking in the middle of the street, you're going to be a hoodwink now. I mean, it's just common sense, don't stand in the street.
There's a misconception that people have that if you're pedestrian in the street, you automatically have the right of light. That's not true. You are creating a hazardous condition, you're impeding traffic by being a pedestrian impeding. It's dangerous, and nobody wins if someone gets hit, everybody loses. So, you know, shovel, let people get up on the sidewalks. If you do get forced to walk in the street, make sure that you're paying attention and that you're wearing something that somebody can see, and we all just have to kind of slow down and use some common sense on these dangerous conditions.
Yes, if you have to walk in the street to avoid obstruction, stay close to the curb, don't walk in. I saw a couple today literally walking right in the middle of the street on the town when I came up here today.
And my thought on that also would be, if you're afraid to report those, if you feel that it's so unsafe to walk on the sidewalk that you have to walk in the street, please, please reach out to the city and report those incidences so that we, so we can address them with code and with the police. It's important, you know, we want our community safe. We sit up here on hard, on safety, it's safety, safety. If we don't know about it, we can't address it, so please be safe.
Chief, I would just add that, I know that your guys are writing tickets for people in the street, because I know someone personally who got dropped off at the bus at Aton Ford and walked across the street, and he got lit up. This guy's never been stopped for anything, so there have been a couple of hit and runs on A bottles, so I appreciate the guys out there when they do get them.
Yeah, we're definitely on the amount. It tends to be, they're a little more careless down there, so we do direct the attention there, but we'll get it all over the city.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Hey, Chief, while you're here, it was a nice presentation by your officers, and a nice presentation by you to recognize the people that really went out of their ways to take that action.
Yeah, I'm very fortunate for good businesses and people that live in the city and work here, and I just want them to be recognized, not in a private meeting like we do ours, so.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, communications from our city attorney.
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City manager?
As she insisted, I answered. Okay. You know, I just wanted to say, you know, well, I can't go meeting without saying that. Lot of cool things and interesting things happening in the city of Hazel Park, but we're going to be busy. I want everybody to know, we're going to be trying to rebuild John R. and Nine Mile. We're going to be redoing the master plan. We've got all kinds of things going on here in the city of Hazel Park this year, including the new construction at Skull Park, which I want to involve a whole community in, because the more community participation that we get, and the more people that show up to help build and to help design and to participate, the more of that grant we're going to be able to use for equipment and make Skull Park spectacular. So, there's a lot of things that are going on. So, again, always want to hear from everybody, if it takes me a day or two to get back to you, while all this is going on, please be patient with us because we're a little busy. But I think we're bringing some really, really exciting new things to Hazel Park, and it's going to be busy year, but it's going to be exciting year, and I can't wait.
Thank you. Communications from our council, councilwoman Collins?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. The master land use plan and the parks plan, and Melissa, thank you for willing, be willing to serve on this board. This is the community's opportunity, much like the John R. corridor study, to say what we want. This is our opportunity to say what we hope for, what type of businesses we want, what type of housing, and it's important that everyone participate. If you can't attend the meetings, there's a couple of surveys online that you can do, and you can, you can get your comments in and writing and social media, and just please tell your friends, tell your neighbors, we need as much public participation as possible because it is our community. Second, I forgot to mention in civic announcements that we have the Dollar Skate, which is the twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second from noon to three at our beautiful Pike to Ice Arena. This is one that we had last year, it was warmer in the ice arena than outside. I'm hoping that's not the case this time. It's a really inexpensive way while the kids are on their winter break that you can have a very affordable activity. It's fun. If you have kids ten and under, thirty minutes, they're going to nap when they get home, it's great. I also would like to extend my condolences and gratitude to the Dingle family. We lost Congressman John Dingle, and I know that they laid up the rest today, and what a, what an amazing life, what an amazing service, and I want to express my condolences to him and his, his family and his friends and colleagues, and just express gratitude as well for the example that that man left. And I think the last thing I had was to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day. Stay safe, hope everyone's happy that day, and thank you again all for coming out.
Mr. Mayor, before I, I thought, I thought I wished Diane a very Happy Valentine's Day. I know, you know, how much I appreciate her and how much I appreciate the sacrifices she did during putting up a meeting to the manager for the back seventeen years. Thank you, Diane.
Counsel? Sorry, I'm just...
First, I want to thank Pastor Stanley for coming out and speaking today. Thank you for doing that invocation. I appreciate your participation. I know I have a city member, we talked to you, as we're trying to draw in more of our local church members and church leaders, religious leaders in the area to come and do that invocation so we have a great representation of the faith community here, so thank you for that. I want to thank everybody that attended tonight. Great to see some familiar faces, people that are stepping up to volunteer and serve. Thank you so much. This wonderful opportunity we have going on here with Building Small Business, I think this was a really advantageous city council meeting where I feel like we accomplished a lot, and that's a good feeling. Moving forward is kind of my motto for the year, just keep moving forward because, you know, you can't, you can't let things keep you back, and I feel that that's kind of the motto for Hazel Park. So, thank you all for being part of this, moving forward, and thank you all for all your support in all the things that we try to make happen here. So, and again, spread the love, not just on February fourteenth, but all the time. Love your neighbor, love your friends, love your family, tell the stranger it might make their day better.
Counselwoman McHirrow?
Thank you, sir. I want to say thank you to all of the volunteers at the Board of Commissions, especially, you know, it's not like Sharon, Amy, and Faith, and Nicole, Melissa, Barbara, and Jeff. Without the volunteers on these Boards of Commissions, you know, the city would pretty much grind you to halt with the things we need to do. We up here can't accomplish everything, and they help us out a great deal. I want to just remind everybody to walk on the sidewalk, shovel your, oh. Actually, I had to look out for somebody riding a bicycle the other day, too. So, watch out, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day. If you have somebody you love, tell them every day, thanks for coming.
Maybe for a town.
So, I want to reiterate what some of my fellow members up here said. It's great having so many people interested in abortion commissions. Without abortion commissions, we would not be able to get as much done in the city because volunteers are greatly appreciated and also still desperately needed. So, if you have any friends that are interested, if you're sitting out there and you don't already belong to a war commission, please feel free, go to the website, see what's available, apply, come join us, come volunteer, come do things. It's also a great to see so many new people in the audience that weren't even here for something on the agenda, that you're just here because you care about your community and your government, so I'm so glad you came out today. Weather, please be safe, please shovel your sidewalks for not just people walking, but your male person who comes by every single day, it is horrible, horrible, horrible weather. And if you are in good physical shape, do your neighbors, help them out. If you have an elderly neighbor, please make sure they are taken care of and that you check in on them. If you are yourself elderly or disabled and you can't do this, please don't hesitate to ask for help. If you just ask, you will be surprised, people will happily come out and they will help you and they will do your walk. So, and we do have some bad weather coming, so please be careful, drive careful, give yourself a key sign. And I'm going to say what the chief is going to make me for, if you're going to warlock your cars, please don't leave them unattended. So, be safe.
Thank you. I better say this first. Happy Valentine's Day to our wife, and happy birthday to my wife, because her birthday is Valentine's Day. I would be a double trouble. Continue after. Anyways, with that being said, I'd like to say thank you for coming out, participation and camaraderie of the lady through this meeting, it's been very nice this evening. I do state that Counselwoman McHirrow was going to bring it up, the fire department bowling event is Saturday, we have a Madison Bowl, they just sent me for a hundred dollars per donation, too, so that's what we're thinking. And if you anticipate, go up there, if not, if there's not a room to bowl, donate some money to the fundraiser. That's what it's about, giving back to our community. And if you just go by, chat with some people, you can maybe run into, we used to have the Hazel Mark Bowl instead of see it going, but there's time for improvement and changes throughout our community with the new developments that we have of on Ten Mile Wheel Racetrack. I miss the racetrack, too. But we all have a time and place in our future, and the city of Hazel Park has changed and evolved over the last two years. It's nice to see how we've come through the recovery of the recession and to a new renaissance and presence for a future. And what they do change with that and having council people that...
And what the new change with that, and having councilpeople that want to work together and make changes whether they get along or not, or whether I get along with them, is how we get to the, in this point, of how we get our city to move forward, as our councilwoman said. I think that's the ultimate goal here, no matter what. Whether or not we can disagree, argue back and forth, I disagree with people, I get along with it, but it's how we get to the point. When we get to that point, that's what makes the difference in our community. And you know, Mr. Klobuchar and I, we argue a lot, but we get to the point, down to the business, and even Mr. Hero here, I'm just bringing it all out, we're bringing all the laundry out. We just get to the point. We've known each other so long, we just hammer each other out. We have done this for everything for a while, for thirty years almost.
Yeah.
So, it's been a long time. That being said, it's been a wonderful evening. I want to say thanks again to the police department for making a very nice showing of presence and support for their colleagues and for the volunteers. The volunteers are, in fact, when I was a volunteer for many years before I ran for office, and without that, you don't have anything. You really don't. Ultimately, we're volunteering up here. We get a little paycheck, but it's a volunteer. I spend a lot of it, too. We have to do everything we can to help make our community ever stronger, and I'm serious about the census. We need people to get out, volunteer for the census bureau, so you can at least make a few emails, a few phone calls, and help it out, so we can get a better database of how many people we have in our community and grow our community. And we're going to repay South John R. this year. We're going to redo North John R., Nine Mile. We're going to have, hopefully, get some small businesses going on here. With all this action, plus the new corporations and businesses get the big box stuff up here at Ten Mile, creating jobs fifteen plus an hour, with all this going on, we can go up. I'm not jinxing anybody. We got to keep it up. There's no jinxing here. We're going to make it work, and that's what we do in Hazel Park, we make it work. Even with the contractor here that thinks everything goes hunky-dory the way it's going, we're going to help them work through this.
Yeah.
And he's just got to follow the rules.
That's right. Once that starts happening, he's going to love you, Melissa, and he sees you to love him.
So, it works around, rolls around, that's what the motto is for this year. Make it work. We'll make it work as long as you're workable. Have a good evening. We'll see you tomorrow.
Oh, should we adjourn, Mr. Mayor?